Okay, good evening, 6:00 PM, December 3rd. I call the Board of Selectment to order business meeting. President is Sleckman Gilman, I'm Sleckman Maxfield. Chairman Miller will not be here tonight, so I'm going to run the meeting. We have Fire Chief Tom Blanchett, we have Police Chief Dana Flanders, and a member of the Police Department, Brenda Pearl, our Town Administrator. Russ Pearl, our Road Agent, will not be here tonight. The first thing we will do tonight is take the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. If you would please join us.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand as one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next we'll be accepting the consent agenda, but before we do, I'd like to take one, mention one thing that's in the consent agenda, and that is the Trails Committee, October 28th, 24, meeting minutes. And the Trails Committee is not an offshoot, but is part of the Conservation Commission. And we have, I think, six trails, walking trails now in Loudoun, and there's one on Youngs Hill Road, and the Bachelor family from, they live on 129 and Piston Road, right on the corner, was Albert and Clarence Bachelor, donated 152 acres of conservation land to the town of Loudoun. And up on Youngs Hill Road, we have a really nice trail that's utilized quite a bit. And the Bachelor family that donated the land several years ago is spelled B-A-C-H-E-L-D-E-R, Bachelor. And there was another family in town named Bachelor, but not related, it's B-A-T-C-H. And the trails, the signs up on the Youngs Hill Road for the Bachelor Trail is spelled B-A-T-C-H, and the kiosk inside the trail as you go in is also. So it's the right name, but the wrong spelling, and the family that donated 152 acres to the town of Loudoun, the original Bachelor family, and allegedly, I believe, were the first family in the town of Loudoun. So I think we're going to ask the Commissioner of the Conservation Commission, Chairman, to have them redo that name and get the correct spelling. They do a fabulous job, we're not criticizing at all, but we really want that correct name. And if, I think just if Sleckman Gilman agrees, and I agree, we don't need a motion, I don't believe, we're just, the Sleckman has a consensus that we'd like that name changed. It's too bad, because it's etched in really large letters, it's engraved and so forth, but we would like that changed. With that, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed.
And I'll second the motion, any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have Department Heads' Reports, and this evening, we're going to start with Chief Flanders, Police Chief, and he has some awards, he wants to present, I believe.
So in the course of my career, I've yet to do any awards for civilians and their them jumping into action. This past year, I had a very serious motor vehicle accident, 106, that resulted in the death of a juvenile. There were several other people that had life-threatening or serious injuries as a result of that accident. The individuals I've asked here tonight, and I want to recognize here tonight, all live amongst us in Loudoun. These are people that stopped, these are people that rendered lifesaving aid before first responders could get there, and kept the scene intact as much as they could until we could get there and rescue could get there to assist the people that needed our help. You know, as first responders, we expect to go to scenes like that, we expect to deal with that. As somebody driving down the road, that's all what you expect to do every day. These people who live among us, pay taxes in this town, stepped right into action, I felt like that should be recognized, so that's what we're going to do here tonight. And not just that they stepped into action when somebody needed them, after the fact, when we needed statements and accounts of what happened, and where this car made contact, and what happened prior to the accident. A lot of them provided accurate witness statements that really assisted with the investigation. So I've invited the people here tonight, I'd like to recognize the six of them, and this is a meritorious citizenship award from the Loudoun Police Department. First of the people I asked to step would be Catherine Silaria.
Chief, if we can get you just a second.
Sure.
You guys can just crunch in just a little bit.
So again, I just wanted to recognize those people, because, you know, they didn't have to do what they did, and they did it, so. My Department had update, we had a cruiser go down late last night, we got the report on it today, we should have it back by tomorrow. All staff has completed our mandatory trainings for the area, but an officer still has about four hours of training left to get, but we've got a plan to meet that. So I know we've been talking about this police cruiser that we're trying to replace that was damaged in the accident. The 2023 cruiser that I submitted to the ARPA committee was no longer available by the time we had the approval to buy the cruiser. Now all I can get is a 2024 Ford Explorer Police Cruiser. I verified this afternoon that the cruiser is still there. The out-of-pocket expenses for the town to replace the police cruiser and have it all outfitted and back on the road would be $8,792.09. I'm able to fund this through $1,000 out of our new equipment line, $792.09 out of our tire line, $2,000 out of radio repair, and $5,000 out of our dispatch line. Dispatch operates on account.
Out on that, the dispatch?
Yes.
Yep.
What do we hope to get back out of, like, I know we've talked about insurance, we've talked about Primex, we've talked about a few things, what do we hope to get back? How will we get it back, and what do we hope to get back?
All we'd really be eligible to give back is the $8,792.09 plus happened, and that's the amount we will seek to get out of restitution. We may not get it, and they can check all at once, we may get it over the course of 10 or 15 years at however many dollars per week, but that's what we should be able to recoup at some point from that accident.
And when we get money back, where does that, like, we get a check, where does that go, right back at the general fund at the end of the year? And the rest of the money is coming from ARPA?
Well, half the money's coming from...
Is ARPA and is whatever insurance paid, right?
Right. The insurance paid $20,150 for the cruiser, and they're going to go 60% of the equipment, which I figured as part of my numbers that I brought before you tonight, and ARPA is putting up $20,248.81 for a grand total of $41,098.81.
I think so, so this replaces the one that was damaged, right?
Correct.
And are you asking for one this year in the...
We have it in the budget.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay. Yeah, I would approve those line items.
Yeah, I think we're vested, I think we, I think we've already committed ourselves. Ford Explorer?
Yes.
And I'll second it, so the motion is to allow Chief Flanders to move forward with purchasing the cruiser with monies that he has placed together to cover the expense. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, the motion carried. Thank you.
And I would just like to draw my non-public request.
Thank you, thank you. We accept. Anything else?
That's it.
Do you have anything else to change?
Nope.
So I would just like to say, on behalf of the Sleckman and the town of Loudoun, we too want to commend the citizens that step forward to assist the Police Department, it's very commendable, and thank you very much. So we will move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Same to you, thank you. Okay, next, thank you, Chief Flanders. Next, we have Fire Chief Blanchett. Tom, what do you have tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Currently, we've done 972 calls for emergency service this year. Last Friday, our new hire, probationary firefighter, AEMT Vash Rossfield, had started his orientation and probationary training period. He'll be teamed up with Lieutenant Frenette for 30 days, working with her through the process. We do have one additional candidate who will be participating in his NFBA 1582 physical tomorrow, and if he clears all the hurdles with that, he'll be starting on Monday, and he'll be working days for the balance of the month of December with the duty crew, as well as myself and Deputy Lake doing orientation and starting his probationary training. That will leave us with one position for the Career Department that will remain open. Currently, we've only got one application on the table, so we'll be re-advertising that position, see what we can come up with. As of yesterday afternoon late, the tower was placed back in service. We had a technician here from Emergency One, they sole sourced the computer that they no longer make or stock, and had to have the manufacturer make that part, and then they installed it and reprogrammed all the functions of the truck into that. We ran it through its paces yesterday afternoon, and it's back in functioning, like I said, as of yesterday afternoon. Currently, firefighter AEMT Trevor Gilbert is enrolled in Fire Officer One Class at the Fire Academy, and firefighter Lieutenant AEMT Carter is also enrolled in Fire Instructor One at the Fire Academy, that will be starting in January. We did partner up with the New Hampshire State Fire Marshal's Office. This year in New Hampshire, there's about 45 fire-related deaths, 21 that are actually confirmed residential-type fires where individuals have passed away due to either smoke or carbon monoxide incidents in their residence. In all these cases, the smoke detectors and the CO detectors were not functioning. So they partnered up with KITA and received about 500 detectors that were distributed statewide, we got 12 for Loudoun, we've already distributed three of those. I would just say that if there's any residents out there that do not have smoke detectors or a CO detector, and if they need one installed, they give us a call at the fire station, we'll gladly come out and help install it to make sure that your family's safe and protected over the course of the holidays. We've also partnered up with the Capitol Area Regional Health Network, we're going to be installing two opioid Narkan emergency kits at two businesses in town, waiting to get the memorandum of understanding signed before we go and install them. These kits basically have gloves, pocket mask, and additional doses of nasally administered The Firefighters Association has received a battery-operated AMPKIS COMB extrication tool to be placed on engine two. The value of that tool is just a little over $17,000. The Association asked me to ask the Board if you would post a public hearing to accept that gift on behalf of the town from them.
When, do you have it tonight?
I don't have it tonight, but you have to post it and advertise it.
Sure. Yeah, we could...
The funds for that tool have been generated from, you know, fundraising, donations, and a few grants that the Association was able to get as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so done a lot of work to raise that much money to purchase that tool for the town, and obviously, a large percentage of the calls that we respond to are motor vehicle accidents, so it's...
So what are you asking us to do, to post it for you to...
I think you just need to have a public hearing to accept the gift, because it's greater than, like, it's $5,000 now, Brenda?
$10,000.
$10,000, so.
Sure.
And what is it, an $8,000 piece?
$17,000.
Oh, $17,000. So you need a verbal now, or you need a commitment now, or how's that work?
No, I think...
You don't have the piece yet, right?
We have the piece, it's been delivered, but they would like to donate it to the town like they historically have done with all their other equipment purchases.
Can you just email the specifics on it, and then I'll get it posted and talk about the date?
Okay.
Saying, you need a public hearing to accept it for the towns? You already have it.
And that's going to replace a tool that's greater than 25 years old that was on that engine, so it's a very up-to-date piece of equipment that's very capable to handle modern-day extrications. Currently, in the process of writing the 2024 Assistance to Firefighter Grant, just some facts for the community, municipalities less than 100,000 residents are only eligible to receive up to $1 million. 25% of $291,600,000 is earmarked for combination departments, so across the entire country, for every combination department, there's only $72,900,000 available. Last year, there was 7,962 applications looking to get a chunk of that 72 million from combination departments. That grant application closes on the 20th of December, and we're going to apply, I guess, for the fifth year in a row to try to upgrade our communications equipment through that grant process. We did receive a denial letter for the 2023 AFG grant process back in October. We scored well, but we were not chosen, so we'll make an attempt again this year for Last Friday, we did a coffee with the chief session at the station, 8 o'clock at Station One, we only had one person show up, and the next one will be December 24th at 8 o'clock in the morning at Station One. I did have a letter sent over to the Board tonight that was on the consent agenda from Overwatch. We did complete the transition from LoudonFire.com to LoudonFire.NH.gov. If somebody sends us an email to LoudonFire.com for the next 60 days, we'll still get it, it'll cross. But we're getting the word out as much as possible that our addresses have changed, LoudonFire.NH.gov, which gives us a better level of protection. Overwatch did provide a cybersecurity audit of all of the department's digital electronic computers and email systems and internet and all that, and provided us a list of where we have some areas to work on. That grant to date that they provided us at no cost to the taxpayers was $1,350 so far, and there's opportunity to potentially do a little more with them grant-wise as we move Today, we were notified by the U.S. Small Business Administration that their Disaster Field Operations Center for the East has announced that the Federal Economic Injury Disaster Loans Program are available in New Hampshire for small businesses, small agricultural cooperatives, small businesses engaged in aquaculture, and most private nonprofit organizations with economic losses due to the hail, high winds, and severe storm that occurred on August 5th. This award is for Cheshire, Sullivan, Grafton, Hillsborough, and Merrimack Counties in New Hampshire. So if there's any folks involved in agricultural-type operations that suffered damages from that storm on August 5th, if they want to contact me at the station, I can share the information with them, they can apply for, see if they can get some assistance to recover any of the lost business that they had during that time period. Other than that, I have nothing else to report tonight, and I'd entertain any questions the Board has.
I had a question about the internet being changed over .gov. What do they say, what are they articulating that that's the best way to go, why is that? But just for security purposes, for malware and all that stuff?
Correct, because it's going through the .gov domain, they've got the most current, most up-to-date, most, I'm not the IT guy, but the best of the bestest, keep stuff out.
And you said they came up with a punch list of problem areas? Is that for the whole town, or just problem areas for...
For the Fire Department.
Just for the Fire Department, okay.
Correct.
Is that something we were ever interested in, globally, the whole town moving over to that, instead of having a .gov one way and a .org the other way?
So when I heard about this, they called me after they had spoken to the chief, and they'd set up this situation, and I was contacted, and I said, generally, it'll come through the town office and then go out. So I spoke to her at length, and she asked what we do now and who we work with, and I told them that we work with Mainstate, had it for quite some time. She said, well, then count us out, because we know them, we trust them, we've worked with them often, and we know that you guys are safe with them. So Janice and I set up a meeting with Mainstate and a Zoom call, and we spoke to them at length about what Overwatch does and what they do, and determined that, as far as they're concerned, the systems here and at the PD are extremely safe, and we don't have any concerns, and they don't see the need at this point to change our emails to .gov. We feel very safe with what we have going on.
Okay, cool, just a question.
Good, anything else?
Nothing.
I'm all set, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move into new business, we have no more. Brenda, you have anything for us? Okay, first is an invoice from Leonard's Plumbing and Heating. Annually, Jeff Leonard of Leonard Plumbing and Heating closes out our bathroom out attached to the building here that's used for the outside services. He waterizes the bathrooms, the traps, and so forth, and we really appreciate it, it's could be up to costing the town $275 estimate, and Jeff Leonard does it for free as a public service, thank you, appreciate it. And I did not initiate, did I initiate? Why didn't I initiate? Let me initiate one. 12:30, 24, that's pretty bad looking. Thank you. Next, we have a memo from Chief Blanchett, Fire Chief, concerning a cistern on memory lane. He recommends that we accept a cistern in its current repaired state, and however, he recommends that we acquire a maintenance bond from the developer for $8,000 for a period of five years. And we, we've had discussion whether, how the Sleckman can do that, or whether the Planning Board would do it. Normally, the Planning Board would do that, so we're going to, I think, ask our attorney if we can actually require a maintenance bond for a cistern on memory lane, is that...
Yep, so we currently have money, correct? We already have a bond with this builder, correct?
We do, we have a road bond.
And how much is, oh, just for the road?
It's a roadway bond, roadway.
That doesn't cover the cistern?
Not that I'm aware of, it's...
Doesn't cover the project?
It covers the road.
It covers the road only.
So we need a separate one?
That's what the Planning Board rates set in place, and the developer did it, so we get the...
So we just need a separate one for the cistern?
So if we want a maintenance bond for that purpose, we'll have to see if we can possibly do it, right?
What's the status of the road, do we know?
Well, there's supposed to be a public hearing on the 17th, to see if we've got a petition for you to accept it as a town road. The road has been inspected by the Road Agent and the town engineer, and the cistern by Chief Blanchett.
Could you talk with the Planning Board, could they work this in, or work this up to see if it's possible they could do it, but I'm not sure they can. I'll give you this back, okay?
Yep.
Thanks.
I mean, is there an attorney involved in that section too, of us assuming the road? I mean, I'm sure someone's going to inspect it and all that stuff, and...
No.
So the town attorney will basically review the deed, because the developer will have to turn over a deed to the town, we'll have the attorney review that. As far as the road itself, it's the Road Agent and the town engineer that do both inspections.
Right, so we have to go to the attorney anyways on the road? So if we went to the attorney on both things?
Yes.
We're not going twice to the attorney, we're going once to the attorney?
Right, right, exactly.
Can we do that?
We can.
Okay.
Can I, just for clarity for the public, the reason I recommend a maintenance bond on the cistern is because that construction style on that cistern is similar to a couple others that were put in in town, and for example, the one on Creekwater is very similar construction, and the one on Creekwater has now developed a leak now that the town has accepted it, so it's going to be on the town to make the repair to that one to keep it from leaking and holding water. So long-term, we should probably discuss as a community what type of cisterns we're going to accept, because the type that were installed in these locations inherently have some issues with them due to ground movement and shifting. So if we're going to accept that one, because of what we're learning with the one on Creekwater right now, that's why the recommendation's in place, just so that expense isn't borne by all the taxpayers before we go ahead and accept it, because obviously, it's had a problem, it's gone through a repair cycle, but oftentimes, for geological reasons, these things will leak.
How long's Creekwater been in there?
I don't have an idea when that was installed, it was before my time, but it's been a while.
It just started leaking now?
This past summer.
Do we have to just go five years, or we can go more than that on a bond? How far out do we go on that?
Normally, the roadways are five years, it's just a ballpark figure at this point.
Yeah, that's why I threw that out as a suggestion, because I think the bonds for the roads are typically five.
Because that's what the Planning Board already specified, five years.
Wouldn't it be reasonable to, if you're going to start with one, to look at all the future ones, to have a maintenance... at all the future ones to have a maintenance bond? Because you've already lost some, right? I mean, you can't go back.
I think it's reasonable that when people are coming forward for these developments, we discuss the style, the construction technique for the cisterns, and something that is less apt to have issues. These, these cisterns were installed, they're basically pre-gas concrete circles or boxes, and they have a female edge on them, and they apply a mastic, a butyl sealer, and they slide it together and lock them in place. The problem is, as we all know, in New Hampshire, the ground moves. So over time, if the ground shifts, that mastic material between the blocks shifts, and that's where you get your leaks. So the gentleman that fixed the one over at Memory Lane essentially goes in, reapplies butyl. You have to dry, pump the tank, dry the tank, dehumidify the tank, heat the tank, apply more butyl, rubber, mastic to the seams, and then hydraulic cement over that. So it's a pretty extensive process to repair them, because it's not, it's not a hole. It's a leak in a crack somewhere. So you gotta seal every crack in the thing again essentially.
So are you suggesting that the planning board comes up with a specific design for a cistern or something?
I think that we could make some suggestions to them on several options, because I think options are important, not to lock people in the one particular design standard, but I think this particular design has some problems if the site prep isn't 100%.
So you should work with the planning board on this?
I would, I would like that.
Okay. Anything?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a cemetery deed. I guess we need a motion to, do we?
You don't have to make the motion.
But we, we have to have a notarize, right? And you're a notary? And you're gonna watch us sign it? So we will sign it. It's for, we don't need a deed to say what it's for, right? We are the agents to put this into effect, so we can. Okay, thank you. Then we have some items that are not on the agenda for new business, but we'll describe them. I'll describe them or we'll describe them. So next, we have a driveway bond agreement that the person would like to get through. Joan Conquest, $2,000 driveway bond agreement. We have the check, and I guess we need a motion on that. Motion to approve the bond for, for Joan.
Russ, look at this. Is any charge driveway?
Yes, look at it.
Did you go with it?
Yes.
May I make a motion to accept the driveway bond agreement?
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. By majority rule, the ayes have it. Motion carried.
Rest of us to sign it.
And the road agent needs to sign it also. I guess we can put it in the bucket for now. Thank you. And next, we have a application for a per diem firefighter EMT. It would be a part-time per diem. The application is here for Matthew Stolness, Stolness? Stolness. 18 Pond Road, Chechester, New Hampshire, and you've interviewed him and done the whole work. He's qualified. Did you send this?
I looked at it.
And so I guess we make a motion to accept him as a per diem firefighter EMT.
Oh, this isn't the one I sent him. So I'll make a motion to accept the per diem employment for Matthew Stolness.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
None.
And he's been vetted, I mean, I've interviewed him, he's good to go. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. By majority rule, the motion carries. The ayes have it, the motion carried. Good. We could put it in the box, I guess. And next, we have a a recommendation for a full-time firefighter EM position. The name of Austin J. Wyman, correct? And he's been interviewed, and he's qualified, he's got the resume. And the interview consisted of, did you send them that?
Yep.
Again, and your group. And this will be for the full-time position, correct?
Correct.
And this will still leave you one short at this one. Okay. So I'll take a motion to accept this person.
I'll make a motion to accept the chief's recommendation of hiring Austin Wyman for a full-time position at the Loudoun.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
None.
None. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. By majority rule, the ayes have it. The motion carried. And what do we have next? We do not, cemetery deed. Any other new business? Do you have any new business?
Nope.
Selectmen Gilman, I don't seem to have any. So old business? I don't have any old business. I mentioned the bachelor issue.
I did want to bring up one old business. I think last time we met, there was an issue with whether we had to pay a certain amount of money to the attorney to enter into a bond?
Yes.
And I think we flushed that out as we don't owe anything. So the bond would have to pass through the town meeting for us to owe anything. If it fails at town meeting, we owe nothing. And I think there was a question if we owed $7,000 or $15,000 or something like that.
$75,000.
Yeah, we, we cleared that out pretty quickly, and we don't owe anything. Engaged in the bond, we don't owe anything, and if it doesn't pass, we still don't owe anything. If it passes, then we get, then we get into a relationship with the attorney.
I initially thought we didn't owe anything, but?
I just want to clear that up first. I think the public was curious about it, so.
Okay, next, after all this, we have appointments. We have Kelly Booken from Cleff Hill Road. I have the, is Kelly here?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelly, if you want to come to the podium. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? What is it?
Pretty close. It's Booken. It's Ukrainian.
Booken? Okay, great. And tell us what you have. I think we know, I want to talk about Cleff Hill Road being a one-way, one-way road.
More or less. So Cleff Hill Road, just to start, my name is Kelly. I live on Cleff Hill Road in Loudoun. I appreciate you both having me here today. I appreciate the response to the emails that we have been sending. Have you been able to view the videos, just so I know where to start and what I'm working with?
I review the videos, yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that you took the time to do that. I know it's a frustrating situation. We come here and we look at you two to, you know, make all these things happen, and it's not easy. It's not easy being in your position. So I do appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to the town and some of the grievances we have. Just a question. Do you have an inclination of how much traffic is on Cleff Hill Road? Is there a traffic survey that you've been able to look at?
Yeah. We, I think after the initial email, we put our trailer up there. I don't have the information from me. I brought it from the last meeting. But I want to say it was around 2,500 cars a week, a few hundred, like, I think the average is 400 cars a day.
Okay, so I have the traffic count report from New Hampshire DOT that was done on Thursday It's a survey, they have someone sit there for a 24-hour period. There was 1,666 cars in 2023 on Cleff Hill Road.
Was that during the time, no?
It wasn't.
It was not? Thank you.
Thursday 8/3. So 1,666 cars. I have the report. I'm happy to share that.
In what period of time was that?
This was from Thursday 8/3/2023 to Friday, Friday 8/4/2023. It's a 24-hour period that they set, and they can deduct the, so 1,666. The population out in from the census is 5,724. Of that, 22% are underage, so you can deduct that. So of the amount of traffic in one day, I think it's fair to say that they're not all coming from Loudoun. They're coming from other towns utilizing Cleff Hill Road cut through. So our concern is not only the, the noise and the noise pollution and the quality of life that the residents face. What prompted me to send the original email was I saw a woman walking her son on the side of the road, and they had to jump in our yard because they almost get hit by a car. And this isn't untypical. This is the norm, that there's so much traffic on this road and people speed. My husband's contractor, we have a camera that faces his truck and his trailer, so we can witness all these accounts of what's actually happening in the cars that are speeding. It's to a level where it's extremely unsafe. We fear walking our dog. We, we've talked to other residents there, and they have similar stories, and I'm not sure what can be done, but I don't think anything can happen without attention being brought to it. So we're just citizens bringing the attention to it. And also, in the morning, starting at 4:30, we have cars that, I, I would like to bring my husband up to elaborate more on this, because he knows much more about vehicles than, than I do, of cars that have these exhaust systems that are illegal, waking us up at 4:30 in the morning, and it is, the noise is just, if, if I may play one or two quick videos. This is at, in the morning at, let's just play this, 5:30. I know it's hard to hear because it's my phone, but. Those are three separate cars at 5:30 in the morning. They're doing burnouts with illegal exhaust systems on their vehicles, and it's not, and I'm not sure if it's being policed. I've seen the police there, and I appreciate that. I know we're probably all short-staffed. I work in public service as well. I have exceptionally early mornings sometimes. My job is to house the people that are homeless, housing insecure people. The housing director for a nonprofit, I'm always on call, and I have to say, since moving here, and I do love this town, it's, it's been hard to sleep. I've been, the, the traffic, the noise, it's just, I just think that the noise pollution is not necessarily coming from people that live in the town of Loudoun. It's being used as a cut through, and I'm not sure what can be done. But I would like to bring my husband up here to see if he has anything additional to say on the matter.
Okay. Please, please state your name, just so we can get it in the minutes.
Yep, my name is Nick Booken. So, yeah, I think the main issue here for me really is straight pipe trucks doing burnouts in front of our house at 4:30 in the morning. I think that would be an issue for anyone that lived here. We just spent a lot of money on this house, and, you know, you can say, go back to where you came from, that's fine. Totally accept that attitude.
We don't have that.
No.
Well, I mean, someone just said it, so it's, it is the attitude in the room.
We didn't say that. We wouldn't say that.
You know, but I know you wouldn't say that. You're respectful, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The, the issue is when a straight pipe truck is doing a burnout at Youngsville Road stop sign, and it's like an hour before your alarm goes off, it's pretty frustrating. But it's not just a noise issue, it's a safety issue. Like, I'm walking my dog on that road, you know, frequently, and I've almost been hit a couple times myself. People just don't care, so. I would really appreciate if we could ramp up patrols or something, catch people in the acts.
Yeah, we can keep exploring it. Our, a lot of our discussion is that, is that there's six feet of roads that go onto Cleff Hill, and when the people come out of, for example, Bum Fagan Road, they want to go left or right wherever they're going, or, or Cleff Coastal Road, or Courier Road, or Youngsville Road. So, yeah, it's, it's a tough issue to enforce, for a while anyway, but be a tough issue to enforce which way they go. I know you can split one way, one way, but, you know.
Yeah, no.
It'll be a while.
It's obviously not gonna be a one-way road. I'm not, we're not asking for that. We're just asking
Oh, I thought that was the?
To crack, to crack down a little bit on the, on the straight pipe exhaust.
Oh, sure, yeah. I?
Well, the original complaint was that, the original, the, the original discussion was about making that a no-throughway, and we discussed as a board, as well as everybody else, saying we, it's impossible to enforce that. Unless we sit up there and just pick cars off of plate numbers, and that's almost illegal. You can't do that stuff. So that was the original complaint, and I think we came up with, could not, there are no legs to enforce anything as far as no-through traffic, right? So now we're here, hearing that it's wheels and tires and so on and so forth. I think that's something probably we can put a little more meat into and say, you tell me, chief, is it possible to?
So I, since seeing the initial complaint, trying to target law patrols in the areas that we are being seen, we are out there taking action, and I will continue to do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I, I live on Courier Road, and I used to, still walk that loop, and for many years, it's gotten more, it has more traffic, but every road in town is the same, you know? We're, we're probably 6,000 people and growing, and it's, it's different from 20 years ago, so. But I appreciate your, the noise. It's a school bus route, the school bus goes by my house.
School bus is quiet compared to these guys.
Yeah.
The town trucks, not a problem. The DOT department right across the street.
That's good to hear. Good to hear.
What we hear are guys rolling coal past our house in deleted diesels, the DDF system, straight pipes. I mean, there's this one truck. It's every single day.
Why we have people spin out on dirt, on tar roads, even on dirt roads? The road was just, our road was just graded, and someone kept spinning and moving. Why would they, you know?
If you look at the pavement at the Youngsville Road stop sign, it's getting destroyed. It's all chewed up.
I just went through there.
Well, if you can, like, I'm just gonna speak on behalf of the whole speeding thing and loud exhaust and so on and so forth. If you have times, which seems like you do, and you can provide that to the police chief, which sounds like he's open to going back out there and, and doing whatever he's gotta do, is guys get on the same page and see how, if that solves the problem. I mean, if it's, but I think, I think they're making it no-throughway, it's impossible to enforce. I don't know how we'd ever get it done. And we, if we put no-throughway signs up there and we can't enforce it, that would make people even more upset, because, hey, you're not enforcing what we, what we can't, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the more police presence there, because, I mean, it is definitely because of the speed, like, we have, cars are speeding through there all the time. People walk their dogs on that road. It's not just us, it's most of our neighbors we've had conversations with. So we don't feel it's right to complain unless you're gonna do something about it and talk to somebody. So we wanted to voice our grievances, and I appreciate that. I also do want to state that my family lived in Loudoun for a long time. We couldn't, they, they moved, they couldn't afford it anymore. My husband and I have been looking to get to Loudoun for a very long time. We put many offers in on our house here. Loudoun was the place we wanted to be. So we appreciate that we are finally living here. We love Loudoun, we love the people of Loudoun. I have many friends in Loudoun. My family lived in Loudoun for a long time, so I'm, I'm happy that we're able to be back here. So I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and expressing your views. We'll keep an eye on it there, chief, right?
Yep. I'll take care of it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next, important dates. December 19th, Thursday. Planning Board is meeting here at 7:00 PM. December 23rd, that's a Monday, zoning board meeting here at 7:00 PM. Those will be busy, busy times. Next, we have public comment. Any public comments this evening? Yep, come up, please. How are you doing?
Well, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, hopefully you did too.
Teresa Bassarash, 7337 Oak Hill Road, also a busy road. Any extra vacant police vehicle sitting on the side of the road always slows everyone down, so appreciate all that you guys do. The reason I took the time to come tonight is I saw something quite alarming. I've lived here 20 years now, and those who know my story, know my journey, know that this is a topic that's very near and dear to my heart, is the children. And over the weekend, there was an article in the Concord Monitor that had to do with Chief Bisk and a report of his brother molesting a young lady and her articulating that she brought that to Chief Bisk, but yet he neglected to investigate that. In my time of living here in Loudon for 20 years, I've heard rumors of this. I've heard the story of Howard Pearl and his birthday party and putting his hands down his stepdaughter's pants. I've heard these things. And it's on, it's in the Concord Monitor. These are news articles. And, you know, I'm at this place where, in my story, my journey, you see something, you have to say something, right? And so, this young woman reading this article of what she went through and how her mom was murdered, and then she was not given to her paternal grandfather or her maternal grandfather, but rather to another family and then ended up molested. And my question to the town of Loudon, I don't know where else to bring this, but we as a community, where are we going to go? Are we going to investigate Chief Bisk for his lack of diligence to protect this young lady? Because really, that's aiding and abetting. If you're going to be quiet and you're going to be silent, you're agreeing that would that happen there was okay.
I think Chief Bisk retired, what, six, seven, or eight years ago, but...
Regardless of whether you retire or not, though, we have a fiduciary responsibility to keep the children of Loudon safe.
Oh, I think we didn't...
And I think when individuals make a conscious decision not to protect a child, we as a community have to say that right there, that's not okay. What you did right there was not all right, and it needs to be addressed. And so, as a taxpayer, as a mother that has experienced this with children in my direct care, I would petition the town to really, you know, go back and look and then to know that, and I know you don't want to go there, but that Howard Pearl was let off on a technicality. I want to do a 91A to find out who did that investigation. Was that also Chief Bisk?
I don't, I'm not sure.
That was during that same time period. So, I know this is uncomfortable. And I don't, we don't like to open the closets and talk about the uncomfortable stuff.
I know, this is, but the rules are, it's not on the agenda here tonight. But I'm letting you speak, I'm letting you speak. And I don't know if you have a comment, chief, of what...
So...
This is a police issue.
Yeah, can I make a comment real quick before you make a comment?
Yeah, yes.
I'm not uncomfortable with this at all. Sounds sad, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I know there's bigger entities who handle these things. The Board of Selectmen is nowhere in their own wheelhouse to be able to look into this stuff because we're not, we're not, all of us are not on the same page of how to move forward with that. However, there's bigger entities out there.
Would it be the AG?
AG's office, whoever did the investigations before that. It was, if it wasn't, it probably wasn't Loudon, it might have been Merrimack County. What I'm saying is, I wouldn't take whatever you see on the Concord Monitor as being, that's the end of the story.
Sure.
I assure you that there is a threshold, whether you're a police chief, a police officer, or whatever you are, and you're retired, there's still an ethical issue way back when. I don't really think there's a statute of limitations on after you retire. You see what I'm saying? So, I guess my thing would be that for the board to move forward and look into this type of stuff way out of our wheelhouse. However, there are entities who originally were looking into these types of things totally in their wheelhouse.
I would just, I guess in my mind, and I see that, I see you guys as kind of the pillars of our town, and that you would hold more and carry more weight going to the AG than maybe I would, you know? And I think it takes the whole community to take a step back, especially when I've heard things over this course of the 20 years, and then to see them in black and white in the newspaper was really unsettling. And I want our town to feel good about everything here. So, as the elected, as the police chief, as the fire chief, the pillars that my children, my boys are going to look up to, to be able to look at this and take a step back, and yes, it is uncomfortable, but say, what do we do to make certain that this town doesn't have these things that aren't being addressed?
I agree.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Oh, okay. Please state your name.
Alicia Kingsbury, 293 Bear Hill.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you.
I just wondered if it was worth mentioning with the public hearing that's coming up for Memory Lane, if there's a question about whether or not we can legally ask for a bond for the Cistern. It might be worth postponing it because I'm not sure if it goes forward and the town accepts it, I'm not sure you can go back and then try to get a requirement for a Cistern, so...
Good point.
It hadn't come up before, so it might be worth doing now, there's still time to do that.
Yeah, we're going to call the attorney, right, Brenda? Anyway, so that'd be a good point.
And I had a question with the resignations that are listed on the agenda.
Sure.
I missed who those were.
I think we had two. One was a per diem EMT, part-time. And he took another, I think it's he, and then the other person...
Are you allowed to give their names?
Pardon?
Are you allowed to give their names?
Does this fall under personnel?
It's probably printed what they make, so I wouldn't think so.
Well, it's...
Not asking for a reason.
It falls under personnel of why they're leaving, what they, how they left, and what the circumstance of where is what you're asking.
No, I'm only asking for the name.
It's where you're going with it, but...
No, I'm just literally asking for a name as to who's left the department.
I'm not sure. What do you...
Well, I'm not releasing any.
Huh?
I wouldn't release anything, but...
Okay. Yeah, I guess we won't release the name. And the other person was a part-time police officer who took a job in Durham, I believe.
I'm not even asking why, I was just asking...
Yeah. We'll determine if we can give you names, right, Brenda? Can we ask the attorney, I guess? If it's a personnel issue, we don't...
I'll send you an email under 91A. I know you're allowed to tell me that. I'm not looking for anything in detail.
Maybe you do know also, but...
Yeah, it's in print. You have to tell us what you're paying them, so... And I'm wondering what your thoughts were on the county budget. You didn't discuss it at all here, so I wasn't sure.
It went up, right? And I read it.
I haven't read the whole county budget.
Will you be discussing that at another meeting, what your thoughts are? And if you're going to go back, if there's anything we can cut or you propose to them?
We could discuss it once you read it.
Yep.
Yeah, I read it. They have a large territory to cover, the county home, county jails, county courts, and so forth. And it's understandable that probably their budget increases over the years to some degree, so... I don't remember exactly how much it went up. I think it went up...
My goal is to review the county budget and find cuts. My goal is to go to the school board meeting and find cuts. My goal is to review our budgets and find cuts.
Thank you. I've been waiting a long time to hear that.
So, I'm just saying...
Somebody's finally paying attention.
There's three different, it's a mass of information that I'm just trying to suck in my head, so... Slowly but surely, I get there. But that's my idea, that's what...
Well, I think that's important. You represent the town, and you're the only one who can ask for those things, so I appreciate that.
Anyone else for public input? And remember, it should be on the agenda. Things that we discuss, that's, those are the rules. We don't bring up a subject that's, you know, just because it's a, whatever.
Mark Griffin, 7193 Shaker Road.
Hi, Mark.
Kind of a follow-up on the resignations. Kind of seen a pattern lately of that. You guys able to glean any information? Do you do exit interviews? I mean, is it always coming down to money? I mean, we had a tax collector leave.
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to money. A lot of it does, yeah, yeah. It does come down to money, and they can discuss it. I mean, people are leaving here for bonuses and hourly wages much higher than we're paying, and so, you know, a lot of this. We're not losing, I think it's probably...
I'm just wondering, I mean, it comes down to policy, administration. There could be a lot of other factors, not just, hey, you know what, I'm going to go make two bucks an hour more there. I'm just wondering if you guys are able to figure something out of that.
We hate to see trained and qualified people leave, believe me, we hate to see them leave.
An elected official doesn't leave for more money. They ran.
A...
I mean, nine times out of 10, they're not going to go into another elected official position to make more money. They might have to actually leave a field and be like, God, I thought I could do this, but, you know, at 20 grand, I got to go take a part-time job at 30.
Yeah. And it begs the question also, is elected officials, how much are we going to pay elected officials?
Right, right.
And we never came to that absolute conclusion, yeah, like the selectmen, how much are you going to pay them? Or how much are you going to pay the tax collector or the town clerk, treasurer? They are elected officials, and they know what their salaries are when they come in, and then they...
To me, there's three reasons why people leave. They leave for money, they leave for schedule, or they leave for morale issues. And probably out of everybody who's left Loudon, somebody has left for one of those three reasons. So, to say it's all money, can't say it's all money. Say it's a better schedule, can't say it's better schedule. Morale, yeah, I could say, probably morale could be an issue. But everybody who's left has left for one of those three categories. Loudon is one of the lowest in the area paying as far as positions-wise. And I'm not talking elected officials, we're talking like firefighters, we're talking police officers.
I just brought up the elected official because, I mean, that's an unusual resignation.
Yep. And out of those three categories?
Being sold.
Right.
You know, and I can also name easily a half a dozen selectmen that served one term and left too, so... And because of businesses, their business and so forth. So, people, people visit turnovers most of all the time.
Okay.
In the last 30 years.
It stuck out to me.
Yeah, good.
I was wondering if you guys had kind of seen it.
That's a good point.
Maybe you had something to think about.
We'd like to get a grasp on it, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, like, they're not into, Loudon shouldn't be, and hopefully, we can put a stamp to it that we're a training ground for some places, so... And that's sometimes what happens. We train them.
I work for a county, I see the same thing.
You get it, yep. There's a new generation of workers out there, too.
Yeah.
You know, and unfortunately, the tax collector left. Unfortunately, we hate to see it go, and then we, another one came in as a certified public accountant, so, you know, we were in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other public comments? Without any more, Jeff, how are you doing?
You just touched on base on training grounds. Fire department is putting Trevor Gilbert through school, and he's a full-time firefighter at Belmont. So, why are we paying for the schooling?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how the whole system works, Jeff. I don't, I don't...
I don't know how the system works either, so...
Yeah, I don't know what the certain training he needs to, if he's full-time at Belmont, I don't know. Maybe there's certain things, I don't know. I don't have the answer for it.
Can we find out an answer?
Chief, you want to answer that?
I think the total outlay for the town of Loudon is $140.
For him?
For an employee that's been here for almost 10 years.
The school that he's going to is $140? I was just going off by what you said.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Stepping stone.
Yeah, and that's, small-town communities are going to have this problem. They all have this problem. Judges are everywhere around us, so it's, I don't think we're any different, just... You know, we talked about tech, we talk about taxes, and we talk about reducing them and cuts and this and that, and yet, every time we do it, or every time something, it's, our guys are leaving for more money. They're just going somewhere else to go... And again, it can be better morale, it can be better schedule, it can be better pay. You know, Jeff, you look out, you look out there. There's better opportunities, better opportunities out there for this young crowd coming in.
And they need for bonuses too. They get bonuses when they leave, we don't.
We were hoping that last meeting, last town meeting, that we were giving everybody a raise and that would happen, like, $2, that was going to...
Hope the holder.
But I don't think it did.
Well, we went up two, and everybody else went up three. That's, you know, how it goes, so... There's no pool.
Okay. Anyone else before we close? I guess we can both, you can put those... Anything else, Brenda? You missing anything?
You want to look at that? Dana? After.
So, we all said?